At this time, I'd like to bring up Darius Quinn to give us a presentation on the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Report. Darius, please be mindful of the time today. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do. You sound a lot like Darryl stopping by my office.
I'm getting stares.
Well, also with that in mind, I'll pay for it on the back end, but just two really important notes before we get started. One, I just want to publicly thank Darryl for his leadership over the last years. This will likely be the last time that I have the public podium before Darryl retires. And Darryl, just so you're aware, and the rest of the board, I think you need to know who Darryl really is behind his interactions with you all. So first of all, Darryl, you've been a great boss over the last 18 years, and I thank you. You've also been a great personal mentor, especially along the lines of fatherhood with respect to our daughters, so thank you for that. Then lastly, Darryl, you've been a great advisor in the area of PowerPoint, so I really appreciate that.
We know that's true.
So one last note before we move into the presentation. Just because this is not a Darius' presentation, this is a Kent County presentation. We are Kent County. A number of individuals contributed to this presentation, and I'd just like to have them really quickly stand, and that are members of my Human Resources team who are here with us today, members of the Executive Oversight Team who participated in our intensive strategic planning process, and members of the CIC. If you could just really quickly stand, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I want folks to be able to understand this is not just a Darius' presentation. Thank you, Stephanie. So with that, we'll move into our Kent County Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Update, and just again, thank you for your time. For those of you seasoned board members who have been here, you know that it's been at least eight years since we've had an opportunity to present to you. So Commissioner Mast and Talon specifically, thank you for the continuous pressure to come back and present this information that did not fall on deaf ears. We'll quickly move into the presentation. A couple of things I'd like to share with you today. First of all, just a really quick history and background of the Cultural Insight Council, our formal diversity effort, the business case. So there are several folks who oftentimes wonder why we engage in this business. Would like to quickly share with you why that is, the results of our 2016 strategic plan, and then last but not least, our diversity report, and then I'll leave you with a quick video in terms of who we are here in Kent County. So really quickly, in terms of when this work began, so back in 2000, Darryl Delavio, then Board Chair Steve Heacock, former Human Resources Director Frank Kluist, and a number of other individuals were very integral in establishing a Staff Insight Council. And during those times, I was here, and I remember it, things were not so pretty here at the county, and Darryl wanted us to take a look at how Kent County was engaging with communities of color, specifically around the areas of our purchasing as well as our employment practices. So a team was assembled, and then what you have before you are a couple of quick bullets here, some of the recommendations and conclusions that were reached was that we've made significant strides and efforts to ensure that our employment and purchasing practices were open, but same is the case today, we still had room for improvement. We've seen a steady increase of the number of minorities that were represented in our workforce, and once again, room for improvement. And as a result, when the Staff Insight Council presented that report back to Darryl, Darryl made a recommendation to form the Cultural Insight Council, and that began in January of 2001. And for those of you who are unaware of the Cultural Insight Council, it's a self-directed work team comprised of 27 individuals currently today. You saw several of the members here today, and we provide insight and recommendations on issues such as policies, programming, et cetera, surrounding our employment practices A few of the key accomplishments that the CIC recognized, and this one hits home to me, because we've helped to really transform the culture of Kent County. We're more welcoming and accepting organization than we were in, specifically, I'll speak to my own experience in 1999 when I first began. My wife and I moved to this community in 1998, and oftentimes, we would hear how unwelcoming Kent County was. So a part of my talking point when I'm out in the community is that this isn't your grandfather or grandmother's Kent County. We are a much different organization than we were back then. One of the key accomplishments are our educational brown bag lunches. These are voluntary brown bag lunches that employees can come to. Typically, we average anywhere from 120 to 150 participants. From a human resources standpoint, and I'm sure corporate counsel would also appreciate this, we've also reduced the internal strife within our organization due to education and awareness. Another area that I'm really proud about is increased accountability through our performance management evaluation for MPP or those who are in the nonrepresented employee group. And again, the final bullet here is enhance community perceptions of who we are here in Kent County. Recognizing the time here, really just want to state what our business case is for Kent County here. I serve on a number of different diversity type of boards, councils, et cetera, and they all have a different business case. At the core, doing good work is certainly there and doing the work of the people, but our business case here at Kent County is slightly different. Public service, service is what we do. So we want to make sure that all of the folks that you represent are receiving the best service as possible. And then I'll just move all the way down to the extreme. And again, from a human resources standpoint, cultural understanding really reduces the number of internal complaints, external complaints that we receive, which has an impact on our bottom line here. So just wanted to share with you quickly what our business case is. So spoke to you briefly, the CIC began in 2001, so 2016 marked the 15-year anniversary, and I'll take you back to approximately September of 2015, sitting in my monthly meeting with Darryl, and he says to me, "What do you plan on doing to mark the 15-year anniversary of CIC? Do you plan on some sort of celebration?" Number one, he caught me off guard because I didn't realize that 15 years had passed so quickly. And I went back to the Cultural Insight Council, and we came back with a recommendation to Darryl, and we said, "You know what, Darryl? Due to the current climate across our country, some of the things that we're experiencing here close to home, this is not the time for celebration. This is the time to hit the reset button, refocus our energies, talk to the stakeholders who are involved in this work, several community stakeholders, let's talk to our employees." And we did that, and we engaged in a strategic planning process with the Cultural Intelligence Center, nationally renowned cultural intelligence center located right here in West Michigan. And you'll see on the slide before you, and you'll hear cultural intelligence throughout this presentation. Cultural intelligence is the capacity to relate and work effectively in culturally diverse situations. Just if you can, put a placeholder there, because you'll hear CQ or cultural intelligence throughout our conversation here today. So the process that we engaged, over 11 meetings with our Cultural Insight Council and our executive leadership team over the course of 2016, community stakeholder input, on a couple of slides here, you'll see who those community stakeholders were. We had our leadership team take CQ assessments, which gains their capacity to learn cross-culturally, employee feedback in a couple of different ways, one in a brown bag luncheon with over 100 employees participating, and then a 1,700 employee survey was deployed, and we received 32% response rate, which we thought was pretty good. Again, the Executive Oversight Team, Darryl Delavio, again, thank you for being the executive sponsor there, and you see the list of the participants there. The community stakeholders who engaged in this process, Commissioner Bukowski, thank you for allowing disability advocates of Kent County to participate. And the audience today, we have City Commissioner as well as President and CEO of the Grand Rapids Urban League, Joe Jones, so thank you for participating in that process. Kent County employees were not allowed to participate in this process. Those folks came together right here in this room. No county employees were present at the urging of the Executive Oversight Team. We wanted raw and unfiltered information to come back to us. We wanted to know how the community perceived us here in Kent County, and from what I understand, they gave it to us, okay? And what I will share with you here momentarily are the results of that strategic plan. So just so you're aware, the filters very quickly that went into the strategic planning process, five filters went into it, and that's our leadership commitment, access and equity, multicultural and inclusive organizational climate, learning and diversity, community engagement and partnerships. That is the filter that went into the strategic planning process. So a couple of the key outcomes. If you haven't heard the term racial equity, gender equity, some form of equity over the last 30, 60, 90 days, you've probably been hiding under a rock somewhere. It's the latest buzz term in this work engaging in DE and I, but we were very intentional here at Kent County about not using that word until we were ready and the organization was prepared to do that. So February 28th, Will Osman with the Grand Rapids Urban League came in and provided us with a primer in terms of what equity means here at Kent County, and I don't believe in reading from the slides, but just to show how important this is, I'd really like to read this definition in terms of what equity and access means here to us at Kent County, and that is "The guarantee of fair treatment, access, opportunity and advancement for all people, employees and community stakeholders while at the same time striving to identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented the full participation of some groups particularly historically underrepresented or underserved groups." We're now engaged in the equity conversation here at Kent County. We also developed a more action-oriented mission statement for our efforts here at Kent County, and that is to advance a culture that demonstrates diversity, equity and inclusion. And as a result of the strategic planning process, we also revised several county policies to become more current and more accepting here. Real quickly, just move you through this slide here. Several members of the Executive Oversight Team, including Assistant County Administrator Wayman Britt, thought that it was important for our commissioners to really to have a quick picture of what equity and access looks like. So the first slide there really looks at equality, the second slide there looks at equitable treatment, and the third slide really looks at removing barriers for individuals. So that's a quick synopsis of what we're trying to achieve here. So the strategic planning process, as I get to wrap up, I realize we're coming to a close here. Three key areas that we wanted to focus in on here at Kent County, that's leadership, organizational culture, and accountability. And you have in your packets the priorities in front of you surrounding these areas. But really quickly, as it relates to leadership, a couple of things that we wanted to accomplish was cultural intelligence training for our executive leadership team and our union leadership, Board of Commissioner engagement, that's why I'm here today presenting before you, and Darryl has prepared a recommendation to this body to engage the board by establishing a subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners to examine how we can improve the inclusiveness of the citizen boards and committees that we have here at Kent County. Organizational culture, training, very training-intensive strategic planning process, and accountability is the last area where we're working with the Performance Measurement Review Team to make sure that all Kent County departments and agencies have relevant performance measures that report back to diversity, equity and inclusion. So really quickly, the diversity report. I hear my cue to wrap up here, just wanted to show you the county population here as reported in 2015, the last census data, so you have a good picture of the community that we're here to serve, and you can also take a look in terms of by the numbers, Kent County's workforce in 2000 and also 2016, so 15 years later. Really, the story behind those numbers are that we've seen a slight increase in our minority workforce, just about 2% over the last 15 years. And then I'd just like to share with you 2016 at a glance, and that is the terms of total number of new hires, 141 new hires, and that includes regular, full-time and part-time employees. That doesn't include seasonal employees. 141 new hires, and you can see 101 of those went to non-minorities, and I'll share with you a quick breakdown here in just a moment. In terms of promotions, 65 total promotions in 2016, and again, we'll be happy to answer any questions. For the sake of total transparency, wanted to show you the distribution of where those individuals are working throughout our organization, and if you take a look at, and I'll share with you as I wrap up again, in terms of the officials and administrator category, in my opinion, that's where the county has a little work to do, and we'll talk about that shortly. Because I know that our board, and specifically us in Human Resources, we care about the work that the veteran community brings to our workforce, just thought it'd be noteworthy for you to know that we have 88 military veterans currently employed by Kent County, certainly in Veterans Affairs, but Sheriff's Department is another contributor to that number. So a couple of quick highlights, minority representation has increased about 2% over the last 15 years since we began our formal efforts. Kent County's workforce really does closely mirror that of our community. Recent hiring of our minority groups, 23%, and 15.3% promotions is trending in a positive manner. I think it's also important for you to know that women occupy 14 key director and deputy director level positions throughout the 25 different agencies that we have here in Kent County, and we continue to support a broad range of community partners, which is also important. How does this impact the bottom line? Again, reduced number of internal complaints. So where we have a little work to do and a couple of key opportunities, we're doing a great job. That's why I asked the team to stand, because we are working hard, but we understand that there's work to do. Leadership engagement has to improve. Opportunities to prepare in Human Resources, more minorities into key leadership roles is an opportunity for us. Hiring from the Hispanic and Latino community is also another area that we need to do a better job in. And then as you understand from the strategic planning process, enhancing our organizational culture and building in accountability are also areas. So as I wrap up again, I thought it'd be noteworthy just to show you the diversity that we have here in Kent County, not just from an employee standpoint, but from a service standpoint. So if you'll direct your attention to the monitor here, we have a brief video that we'd like to share with you.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.
So with that, I apologize if we went over by a minute or two, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those right now.
All right. Are there any Commissioner questions for Darius? Commissioner Womack?
Yes, great video and a great presentation, Darius. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Just one question or a comment on the surveys, I think that should be a goal to increase that from 32% to 100%, but we could probably talk that all morning, but just put it on your to-do list and...
I was 90%.
Great job.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Womack?
The stats on the video, that was per year?
I'll ask. She's the author.
A lot of those were annual statistics, and it continued to rise as our population grew.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Dillon?
A little quick comments. One, I feel privileged to be able to have attended many of the brown bag lunches over the years, and it's just been an absolutely wonderful program, and I really thank Darius and the whole CIC leadership for that effort. I would like to encourage my colleagues to participate in those when possible. It's been really great. I also just want to throw out there for my commissioners, a piece that I think Darius and HR, they're talking about equity within our staff, within hiring, and the culture here. I also think we need to figure out a way to look at equity in the services that we provide and how those services are received out there in the community, and that's not the job of this group, but I do wonder if we could think about how do we look at that and how do we measure that, and that's an important piece of this whole issue as well.
Commissioner Dillon, any other questions? Commissioner Angel?
Good morning, Darius.
Good morning, sir.
One quick question. I noticed the Hispanic and black total populations are mirror each other, they're fairly close, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yes, absolutely.
And then as far as the workforce around Kent County, it looks like Hispanics are lagging behind quite a bit.
Absolutely.
And I was just wondering what...
You know, a number of different contributing factors can be found there. One can speak to the ability to need to read, write, and understand and speak English, and the number of undocumented folks. But I also take responsibility for some of that myself and in Human Resources. We're really ramping up our efforts to get out into the Latino community and partner with, the Hispanic Chamber has been a great partner, the Hispanic Center has been a great partner. So if you look back a couple of slides, I mentioned that that's an area that we need to improve from, but also, we're also working with Lisa LaPlante, who's done an awesome job, helping folks to understand how noble of a calling it is to serve in government. I think that's also another piece of it as well, so we're ramping up our efforts in that degree. I couldn't be more proud to work for Kent County, but I think that needs to translate to different communities as well.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Womack?
How are we advertising and marketing in the Hispanic community, and do we have anyone working in the Human Resource Department that is Hispanic?
Take the second one last, that's the easiest one. No, we do not have anyone working in Human Resources, but we also have a pretty robust and comprehensive weekly email advertising list that we send out. We also work closely with Ellen Formador Magazine. We have a number of different community partners that we work with, but again, Commissioner Womack, that's an area that we are...
Are you advertising with La Voice Magazine or with Panda Rosa, the radio stations?
We've done some stuff with La Panda Rosa, the radio stations. We are not currently working with La Voice.
Do we have any job fairs, or just where we really get in the community and engage with some of the community about the opportunity?
Absolutely, yeah. Great point. Again, my colleague Stephanie Hernandez and her team just recently came back from a job fair with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. This is probably the third or fourth year that we've done that.
Okay.
Again, the efforts are there.
Yeah.
I asked you to hold us accountable.
I just want to say, great job on the increases that are there in every area diversity, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have a... Commissioner Dillon?
Thank you. Just quickly, Darius, I want to thank you and your team for the work. Unfortunately, equity doesn't just land out of the sky, it takes a lot of hard work, and thank you for doing that for us.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Darius, for your presentation today. Moving on to item four, Treasurer's Report.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I am here to talk to you about the very sexy topic of governmental fixed income investments. As I've been telling this board for 18 years or so since we first started this presentation, we operate on the SLY principle, safety, liquidity, yield, in that order. I'm very pleased to tell you that in my 20 years as county treasurer, we've never lost a dollar of principal. So safety is first. Liquidity, we've never missed a payroll, we've never not been able to pay our bills. So liquidity is covered. Yield, we've made some yield. Lately, it hasn't been a lot, but we've done the best we could in the environment that we've had to work in, so. The report that we have today, and I apologize to those in the audience who really want to see all these numbers, but what we're reporting is how our investments are distributed, what types of investments, and what institutions they're invested in. We have, as of December 31st of 16, we had over $71 million in governmental securities, another $47 million in money market pooled funds, and you'll notice after the name of the two funds, it says AAAM. That is the rating, the style of rating given to money market funds, and that is the highest rating you can earn. So there are two highest rated pool funds available to those in Michigan. Then we have CDs and money market accounts with specific banks totaling $207 million at roughly 20, 21 banks and one credit union. The ratings, the numbers following those names, four-star, five-star, et cetera, are the ratings applied to those institutions by an organization called Bauer Financial. They are one of the standards for bank and credit union ratings in the country. In your packet and later on on the screen, you will see a breakdown of what those ratings mean in very general terms, but I'm very pleased, several of the banks on the list were upgraded in the past year. We did lose a bank because of a merger. Two banks that we dealt with became one. We'll have that same issue in 2017 as Huntington Bank has merged with First Merit, so First Merit will fall off the list. But we're always, it seems like we're always adding new banks as well. Then we have about $7 million in various checking accounts as of the 31st, so that we, our total investment pool as of 12/31/16 was $333,500,000. We did earn a little over half a million dollars for the general fund, which was a nice increase over the prior year, but still nothing to write home about. And the total investment pool was $2.2 million. And at the very bottom is my certification that we follow the policy as was originally written and subsequently amended. For those of you who are more visual, here is a pie chart that shows you the distribution. Excuse me. One of the requirements that we have is by state law is that we cannot invest more than 25% of the county's funds in any one institution. We do stay under that by a significant percentage, and that does not apply to the governmental securities, so because they're backed by the federal government, they're considered to be safe, and so that requirement does not apply. So the most we have at a bank is roughly 10% in Bank of America on down. So then the next page shows where our cash balances are by fund, and let me emphasize that that is the cash balance in those funds, it does not necessarily mean fund balance. Those are two different, can be and virtually always are two different numbers. But the cash on hand as of 12/31 in the various funds. So we have general fund, local government investments, DPW, those are the top three. And the local government investments, that's the investment pool that we run. We have roughly 25 local units and other authorities and agencies that are allowed to... We have roughly 25 local units and other authorities and agencies that are allowed to participate in the due. And so we're handling about $73 million of funds on their behalf. Again, going on down to total, the 333,500, or 500,000. And then finally, we have a pie chart that shows the breakdown visually as well. Since I was told to be brief, I'm brief. Any questions?
You get the gold star.
Thank you. Thank you. That was my goal for the day, the gold star.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Treasurer, for your report. Any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. Treasurer Parrish, it looks like, just looking at your investments here, Chase somehow has fallen out of favor with you. Is it their return or how they operate or?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't say they've.
They're one of the biggest banks in the country.
They are, in fact. They're one of the few trillion-dollar banks in the world, frankly. But because of their size, they're, and all of the new banking regulations and requirements that may or may not continue in the future, they're not, they don't really want this type of funds being invested with them. So the $64 is the remainder that was in a savings account that we had with them that we'll be sweeping out eventually. But basically, when they say, we'll pay you one basis point when everybody else is paying 75, they're saying, basically saying, thanks, but no thanks.
Great. Follow-up. I noticed that we have only one credit union is, and sometimes they're trying to be more competitive and giving a better return. Any reason we aren't trying to pursue more credit unions for a higher return? Or aren't they giving a higher return on these?
They are not approaching me.
Okay.
My policy has always been to work with any organization that's based in Kent County, certainly, and then we do work with others throughout the state. But we frankly don't have the time to go chasing new institutions on the list. But if they come to me and say, hey, we're now operating in Kent County or whatever, as was the case with Consumers Credit Union, they approach me. So my door is always open, but we do not pursue them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you. Just, Chair, as a follow-up to that, is there a credit union rating system out there? I know that there's.
There is. Bauer rates credit unions as well as banks. So.
So all of the credit unions that function in Kent County would all be rated and?
I would assume so, yeah. And I don't know if there's a size criteria to be rated, but it's certainly something I would look at.
And have you determined, is there a rate level which you wouldn't consider for credit unions?
Well, as with banks, we have, we do have one bank on the list that's a three-star rating. We don't have a lot of money with them. They're not a very large bank. So we, you know, we keep a pretty close eye on them. But they are, even a three-rating is an adequate rating by Bauer. So it's, it's not really something that we have to be too concerned about. I would not work with a, with a bank or credit union that has a two, two or below rating. So, and other than potentially, only the amount that would be covered by federal insurance, FBI, C.U.A., F.C.U.A. insurance.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Treasurer Parrish, it sounds like, if I'm hearing you right, that there's a policy that will only deal with banks if they have a branch or in Kent County.
No, that's not the only thing. But I, I certainly, I can't ever remember saying no to some, an org, a bank or credit union that has come to me and said, we'd like to do business with you and we're located in Kent County. So there's a bit of a differentiation there. So we do that. But we also, we are allowed by law to work with any bank that has a physical location in the state of Michigan.
Okay.
So, and we do, several of the banks on this list may not be physically located in Kent County, but are in Michigan, active in government funds. So we do work with them.
So if rates and ratings are all equal, do we give any preference to banks that we think might be circulating their money and investing in, in the county?
Yeah, I would say that we do, yeah. Another factor that goes into how much we invest has to do with the size of the institution. The bigger the bank, the more we're willing to put into that bank for, you know, from a safety point of view. So we may, you know, there are several at the lower end here where we're actually at kind of the limit that we've established because of the size of those banks. So, but yes, we do. I believe very strongly in, in working with those that work in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The fund balances seem to be much more balanced than they were, let's say, six, seven years ago. It seems like you had three or four banks that you liked to work with and the rest would have smaller slices. Have you changed your policy in the office?
No, not, really, it wasn't a policy change for us. It was a change in the banking industry having to do with the regulations. Many of the, many of the banks that we used to have lots and lots of money with, like Chase, they simply, they're, because of regulation or change in their business model, they're not looking to sell CDs at a, at a rate that is competitive with other banks. So it's just their business decision on how they do it. And a lot of it does have to do with how investments, how they have to treat certain investments. They treat a CD differently than a money market fund for their reporting requirements and all that. So, so it really hasn't been a policy change on our part. It's been the federal regulation and the banks reacting to that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I know this isn't directly a question for you, Ken. I'm surprised at the, that the general fund investment balance there is greater than our net position for the county, which makes me wonder how liquid are these investments in that $73 million that's part of the general fund? Are these mostly, are they long-term investments, three months? How liquid is that $73 million?
Well, the $73 million is part of the overall pool. So that $73 million isn't invested separately or any differently.
Got you. So some of the pool is fairly liquid, so.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. The $47 million that are in pooled funds, that, that can be drawn out, that's a daily withdrawal opportunity.
That helps.
The $200 million in CDs, because of how they're laddered, we typically, I would say 90% of our CDs are one-year or less. And because of the number that we have, it seems like almost daily a CD is coming due. So if we need the cash, it's available to us. The governmental securities, those are a little bit longer term, but we might go out, say, three years on those if the, if the rates support it.
Okay, any other Commissioner questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Treasurer Parrish.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item six, public comment. I want the public to come forward if there is anyone here. Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, consent agenda. I call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nope. Commissioner Hennessy.
I move a motion of consent agenda.
Second.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Are there any items of discussion for the consent agenda? Anyone wishing to remove items? All right, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
I need to abstain from the minutes because I was not here, but yes, on the rest.
No, you don't.
No, I don't?
No, you don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes.
Commissioner Corndyke?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennessy?
Yes.
Commissioner Volkowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Breeby?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 affirmative. The motion passes.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item eight, resolutions.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Mast?
Sorry, thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 5231723, which is the designation, resolution to approve community action agency designation. We've been studying this for a while. The Finance Committee is passing it on, recommending it. So I move that resolution.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Corndyke. Any questions on this issue? Commissioner Volkowski?
Yeah. What kind of preparations are we doing since the vast majority of the dollars that would go through this seem to be zeroed out in the proposed federal government from the President?
Thank you.
Details, I'm sorry.
We are continuing to move ahead as if the budget will be approved. However, as we all know, we can't completely bank on that. If that happens, then we'll have to stand down on the movement forward because it will impact the budgets. We're moving forward as if the budget will be reconciled and they will approve the budgets for both, both the areas.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just quickly, acknowledging the staff, Jacob, for the work in doing this, I think this kind of effort is exactly what we want to see going on within government activity to identify those circumstances and situations where we can consolidate our efforts and be more effective and give better service. So kudos to all of you involved.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Womack.
Just a comment, great work to you two and the team. And since we talked about this, I've had a chance to talk to some of the employees and people involved at the Housing Commission, if you're in asset building, and it's, so it's a lot of support at the ground level. And I just want to say, good job.
Great. All right. There are no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, resolution passes. Moving on to item B, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair Bolter. I would move Resolution 24 of today's date regarding the delinquent 2016 real property taxes to authorize issuance of a general obligation, limited tax note, Series 2017 from the Treasurer's Office.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions on item B? Seeing none, all in favor?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk Lyons, please call the roll.
Commissioners Womack?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Volkowsky?
Yes.
Breeby?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yes votes. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C, Chair Mast again.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 3231725, which involves approval for the Parks Department to file for agreement.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Jones. All in favor? Are there any questions for this item? Commissioner Skaggs?
Just want to report that I did attend the House Capitol Outlay Appropriations Committee yesterday, and everything seems to be moving forward nicely on this appropriation.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. On to item nine, public comment. Anyone who didn't get their chance the first time, seeing none. Reports? Commissioner reports today. Any reports? Seeing none, let's move on to miscellaneous. Commissioner miscellaneous, Commissioner Mast?
I've got two. I just want to make sure that everybody gets an invitation to attend Network 180's public, annual public hearing on April 10, 4:30 p.m. at the campus on 790 Fuller, the Fuller Campus. So please come and invite your neighbors. I don't think we don't, we're going to have too large an audience, but it's nice to have some people there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Secondly, I want, I was privileged to attend the Wyoming City Council this past Monday night, at which they passed a resolution accepting the fiduciary responsibility for the Kent County Veterans Court, which is located in Wyoming. The Veterans Court has formed a nonprofit, so that now they're able to take donations of funds, get some funds. Our Kent County Veterans Committee donated some funds towards them to kind of keep them along. That Veterans Court is growing. There is many more veterans that I, that they think benefit from going through their court than what they're capable of handling. So this is the beginning of continuing to move ahead and see that going. And I was thrilled by the positive receptivity of the city of Wyoming to accomplish that, put that together. So we'll just pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Melton?
I have a couple of things also. The first one is I went on Monday to press release moment for the Launch U program. I don't know if all of you heard about it or not, but it is, I think, just absolutely game-changing for so many of our students in Kent County. There are several, I have them here, 22 different companies that are working with GRCC and KISD and a little bit through Western Michigan. It is a program where students as freshmen will actually apply to become into the program as sophomores. And they will spend four years, so sophomore, junior, senior, and then whatever, year 13. They'll come out with an associate's degree, and it will be tuition-free. They will also come out with their high school diploma. But they will be hands-on, knowledge-ready to go into the workforce. And this is what these businesses have identified with GRCC and Western Michigan, that they are grossly lacking in persons who are able to come in and actually do the hands-on type work that needs to be done in their companies. Just to give a few, well, one of the big is Auto Matrix, and, but we have Cascade Engineering, we have Lax Industries, Home Builders Association, Wolverine, West, Wyoming Chamber of Commerce, Enterprise Tool and Dice, so some, some very now recognized companies in Grand Rapids, and they have been working on this for a while. So your students who are already going maybe to the KISD Technical Center, this is kind of taking it to that very next level. And instead of being in the classroom, which we all know is not for all students, they will actually be doing hands-on learning this skill. It was, it was very, very informative. I have three packets, if anyone would like them, I can leave them with Pam or whatever. You can look through them, see whatever companies there are. And then the other one is just a very fun fact or fun whatever. One of the students in my district, Jay Sawyer, whose father was the, one of the band directors in Kentwood, has just been asked to play with Nat King Cole's son, so Nat King Cole Jr., in Chicago, which is one of the first times that he has reached out to someone as young as Jay. So I just thought that was very, very exciting.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Joe Jones, the city's second whip commissioner, for coming to today's meeting. It's always nice to see local elected officials attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment our legislative chair for hosting a legislative breakfast that we had recently. And I thought that time spent with solid attendance from our state representatives and state senators was really an effective use of time. We had a lot of good discussion, and I know that that particular meeting rotates, but I just thought it would be worth noting that that really helps bring, in my opinion, our legislative priorities rubber meets the road, because it gives us a chance to one-on-one share why we have these priorities and all of them share what they can do to potentially help. So I thought it was time well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Womack?
Yeah, I just want to send my condolences out to the families that lost four members of their family when lives were taken in Britain yesterday, and just say that it's of their family when lives were taken in Britain yesterday, and just say that it's sad that we have to be proactive against such hideous acts. And when you think of what happened in Britain, when you think of what happened in Orlando, Florida, here in the United States of America, these terrorist acts don't have to be as big as 911 to affect our country or the world. And we have people that are just makeshifting any small terrorist act that they can do, whether it be a car ramming into people, a knife, shooting in mass places. And just want to put a reminder out there, make sure we're being proactive and working with our Sheriff's Department, local police agencies, emergency response teams, to know that, you know, Kent County is going to, you know, support them as best way we can. And put that out there before one day we turn on our national news and Grand Rapids may be on there. And make sure we're also having some type of education out there for our citizens that these things can happen anywhere in the world.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bocowski?
Yes, real quick, the Front of the Court Advisory Committee, you can pencil in Tuesday, April 18. We're going to do a second community forum, and this one will be at Ottawa Hills. When you can put it in pen, we'll send the note out, but right now you can pencil it in for that date. And then also, I hope we are keeping track of the other potential budget cuts coming our way. I know one of our priorities with Lansing is revenue sharing, and of course, our friends in Lansing are fast to pass on budget cuts to us. So we could get double, triple, quadruple dips on the budget cut side of life. So I look forward to those reports from Finance, since I now hang out Legislature.
Loaded. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. So to perhaps counterbalance a little bit Commissioner Womack's observations and admonition, I had the pleasure of attending the Boy Scouts of America event this past week, and can assure you, there's hope in this world. It was just gratifying to see all of the fine efforts and the energy and the commitments to values represented in the fine work of all those young men and women. So it was great to see that, also acknowledging our own Wayman Brit, who was participating in that, did a great job. And one of our judges was also acknowledged, so kudos to them as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Any other miscellaneous? Seeing none. Commissioner Hennessy, I call on you.
I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, until Thursday, April 13, 2017.
Support by Commissioner Corndyke. We are adjourned.
Wonderful. Thank you. Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veteran services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.